Five seconds. Let me know.
We haven't been there yet.
We have sixty seconds?
Yeah, it's not six o'clock yet, it's five fifty-nine.
Okay, I don't have my, I got my watch, it says six, so. Just let me know. I'll start right on the dot. Do you watch Indiana play though?
Oh, I did.
Well, it was all, uh, Peacock. So I had to join Peacock.
Oh, no.
We had to get you.
We had driven so far.
I know, I mean, I did, I go, I'm not gonna do it, I'm not gonna do it. Got it, I'm gonna do it.
We had driven so far to fish.
Yes, sold another subscription.
Yeah, really?
Alright, now it's six o'clock.
Alright. You ready now, Sue?
Yeah.
Alright. Welcome everyone to the Girburn County Board of Commissioners meeting, October twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, if you please rise. My name is Flips and Regent.
I pledge allegiance to the black of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a recipient of federal funds and has supported Dearborn County's efforts to ensure non-discrimination and equal access to all citizens, the county gathered statistical data regarding participants in county activities. Therefore, we have provided a voluntary Title VI public involvement survey at this meeting. You are not required to complete this survey, however, the form is anonymous and will be used solely for the purpose of monitoring our compliance with Title VI and date of yet.
Thank you, Andy. Well, we're gonna start with old business and that's the property on West Side Drive Aurora. Andy, could you kind of give us a summary and then we'll get into the questions and how we're gonna proceed?
Uh, so we. Um, as this, I haven't been on the agenda for a while, you guys are well aware, we had a property owner that expressed interest in purchasing a piece of property along. Hogan Creek and, um, off of West Side Dr- kinda at the end of West Side Drive, adjacent to three fifty. It's, it's a small strip of property that the county owns, it's not able to be developed, uh, but this individual had expressed, um. Interest in purchasing it, clean it up and maybe put a trail down to the creek. So we did begin the process and had two appraisals completed, which I believe were seventeen thousand and fourteen thousand. So the next step in the process, um, it. It's a pretty involved process, so Sue did reach out to this individual today and he said, knowing the appraisal value, he would still be interested. Um, obviously, if you go through this process, it's able to be purchased by anyone, um, not. We can't just deal with him arms length, uh, but he did say he would still be interested. Uh, so the next step would be for the commissioners to determine a minimum bid for the property based on the appraisals and the disposing agent's knowledge of the property. I previously said average of two appraisals, that's incorrect, that's when you're purchasing property. For selling property, it's determine a minimum bid for the property based on the appraisals and the disposing agent's knowledge of the property. Um, so I know, I'm glad Nicole's here because I know most of this property is, is it floodway or floodplain?
Floodway.
Floodway. Floodway, which is basically that it's flood season.
And it's regulated by the state.
And it's regulated by the state. Because of that, there's not a lot that can be done with this property anyway, but that's something that wouldn't. So that goes to your knowledge, quote unquote, knowledge of the property, is that?
Well, it's hillside too.
Right.
But it adds, it would just add, the only. Basic beneficial would be adding it to his property is the biggest benefit.
Yeah, sure.
Um, and so. Uh, determine the minimum bid and then there is a notice requirement, um, setting forth the terms and conditions of the sale inclu- including the minimum bid, the notice must include. A detailed description of the property. Um. I don't know if that's, hey, Danny, go out and survey this property and that detail, that's something that we would have to determine.
Well, that, yeah, it's, what's the definition of detail? In this case.
As someone who previously worked in any field, my, my, my definition of a detailed description would be a meets and bounds description.
To sell the property, you would have to have it surveyed.
Yeah, and I, and I, I don't, you know what piece of ground we're talking about, right?
Is there any, this ain't a description, all of it, we're aware of?
That's what I'm saying.
There, yeah, you're right, but I know should be a deed somewhere from one county.
County owns it.
Um, and I wonder if it's, I wonder if it was a, you wonder if it was a deed for a bigger part, and then maybe three fifty was widened, some was taken by the state, I don't know. That would take some digging, but you're right, there should be some description out there somewhere.
Research some of that stuff down in there. I'll have to look.
Uh, so terms and conditions, I know that, um, Nicole had brought up previously and we just, as we just discussed, this is floodway, so that would be something. Um, you know, I've seen situations where property's been deeded by municipality and it. One of the restrictions says that it must remain green space, you know, that it can't be built on. I don't think this is buildable anyway, cause it's hillside, it's floodway, it's. Um, but that, that would need to be determined, the terms and conditions of the sale. Uh, date that you will begin receiving bids and the length of the sale period, which cannot be more than sixty days. Um, can't be sold to somebody ineligible, if a trust puts in a bid, you have to identify who. This is all the stuff that has to be listed in the notice. Uh, identify each beneficiary or the trust and the settler empowered to revoke or modify the trust. Um, all bids are rece- received are open to the public inspection. A bidder may raise their bid and the raise takes effect after all other bidders have been notified that the bid, in writing, that the bid has been raised. Um, you can choose to use an auctioneer, the auction can be electronic, um, if you're using an auctioneer, that also has to be in. The, oh, nice.
Twenty-five.
That's in scripture that this guy. Hang on, I feel.
I just thinking I might have to take this to my wife's grandmother so she can tell me what it says, because people don't write like this anymore. So there's, so, um. It's weird, it says, so it's, this is all from Indiana Code thirty-six dash one dash eleven dash four, and it actually says you can sell. Property before the bidding period ends, which doesn't make a lot of sense and I don't know why you would do that.
I, I, I don't feel comfortable doing that.
Right, and I don't know why that's in there, but that's what it says. Uh, but the sale would be to the highest and best bidder after having a hearing, so.
A what?
A hearing, a public hearing, you have to have a public hearing prior to be.
It has to be advertised for.
That also has to be advertised, yeah, uh, it's a public hearing, usually it's. Usually one time at least ten days before the meeting unless it's a special circumstance that requires more notice, which I can look into, um.
So before we accept the, the winning bid, we have to have a public meeting?
Public hearing.
Public hearing?
Yes. During a meeting.
Okay, I was gonna say.
Yeah, 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 it could be during.
Okay.
Yeah, during, okay.
Yeah.
So the main thing we need to do right now is to establish a minimum bid.
Minimum bid and if you want any restriction, terms and sales of the.
Well, I think we'd have questions about that. Uh, I, I mean, we can do an average, right? We don't.
Yeah, you can, I just wanted to correct, uh, like I said, the, the average of two is when you're talking about purchasing property, not selling property.
Okay. Uh, I don't, for simplicity.
I think that's a fair way to, to value.
You okay with that?
Sure.
So that's, what, what is that? I got about fifteen-five.
Yeah.
Fifteen-five, we do the minimum bid. And now we have questions like, we wouldn't want any permanent structures or anything like that at, at the property. Uh, anything else? You guys can think of.
It's about the only thing.
But I guess, Nicole, could that be used as a commercial? Anything commercial be? Uh, because of waterway?
It could, um, it would be whether or not the state would deem that. Um, just enough distance from the Ohio River. Um, I don't know if they would be that ruined, but.
So we, we could restrict it, no commercial use of the property? So that we don't impose on the neighbors, the other neighbors there?
Yeah, like new rental or something like that.
Yeah, we say no commercial and industrialist to cover our bases.
Right, or lodge.
Well, you don't want, he might wanna do his own.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, don't mind him using it for himself, but just not turn it into a.
Well, I was thinking, you know, somebody wouldn't put their canoe or whatever in the water, maybe he would have some kind of a. Lodge. Or die.
Be quick.
Just throw it at the wall, see what happens.
Other than the commercial and. Not building on it, but like you said, nobody, you can't really build on it anyway because of the.
The park.
The flood.
Most, since you're recounting, you can't, um. If it's in the floodway, it's very restricted by the state unless it's an Ohio River. That's why I say that, that I would put something in there because the distance from the Ohio River. May give them the leeway to do something, there's not much there, but. Um. And I want.
But that, that, that's so close to the backwater and that.
There were some talks about some of that area possibly being a commercial launch. So, or pickup. From coming down that creek. So.
Well, and I think this is gonna require. Me putting a notice together that I'm gonna have to bring back to you guys. So I can work with Nicole on the language and I can work with Danny to make sure we can get the detailed description of the property.
Usage, okay, potential usage, okay.
Yeah, so no permanent, uh, minimum bid fifteen-five. No permanent structures, no commercial or industrial uses.
So we need any kind of a motion for this, or we're gonna wait till you come back?
Yeah, I'll bring, I, I'll take that, um, all those thoughts. In and, um, go off my notes here and work on getting.
You're not going on vacation or anything?
No, gosh. Was my kid's fall break?
Alright. So we moved the table list till the next meeting again?
Yeah, motion to table the property on West Side Drive Aurora until the next meeting given. Andy bought and did us a little opportunity to put together a proposal.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Okay, Nicole Daly, Director of Planning and Zoning, the seed grant.
Good evening, Nicole Daly, uh, Director of Planning and Zoning, so. Just a few days after the last meeting, I did finally get the contract from the state, I sent that out to you guys, I also sent that out to. Andy for the, um, seed grant that has to do with the nine-one-one G I S data. Um, and, um, everybody, um, Andy looked at it, he's okay with it. I've also, um, talked to the state, they should be sending you as far as if you guys approve, moving forward with this contract. Um. They would be sending you an email.
I got it today.
Did you get it today? Okay.
And it's signed and done.
Okay. Alright, so then that takes place to just looking for official. Approval on everything.
She sent about three different emails, I don't think he was real familiar with how a document sign works.
Yeah, so it just with the privacy, like logging in and everything like that.
So it's signed.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I actually wanted to just, if I could, um, bring up a couple more things, um. I am, um, I don't know if you, I sent an email, it was later this afternoon or later closer this evening. Um, so this is kind of trying to get on there, on, talk to you guys, in front of you guys. For permission to move forward with applying for a grant. Um, this would be for the park board, um, and, um, kind of parallel with the stellar program. Um, it is, um, the, um, twenty twenty-six campaign funding fitness grant, um, that is through the, um. National Fitness Campaign and University of Cincinnati Health, um, and that is. Um, I don't know if you guys had time to look at the photos, but it is for, um, up to sixty thousand dollars. Um, to help with getting some equipment, if you didn't get, I can hand these out.
Along the trail?
Didn't get along, walking fast.
Would be up and bright, it would be near the playground is where we were looking at putting it.
Oh, it's not on the trail.
No, it's actually a whole, uh, apparatus. Um, one side has, um, non-moving mechanical, where it's gravity, basically your body weight for. Equipment and then the other side is like a yoga pad that could be used for yoga or different other things. And also included in this, uh, program and the grant process is the wall that separates the two. Um, we have also talked to them, they have an artistry type, um. Um, program where we can kind of do sponsorships and get a local artist. Um, and, uh, some local artists to compete to be kind of the winner of doing a. Um, local, um, mural on the fitness wall. Um. And that way to help funds and also the grant attaches an additional five thousand for that artist. Um, to help with the expense of putting the mural together.
What was the county? Good money that's gonna have to be put into that?
So it's gonna have to be, um, they provide sixty thousand and it's anywhere from a hundred fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand. Um, this was part of the stellar. Um, goals. Um, so this and since if moving forward through the stellar program and the sixty thousand dollars. So that matches up to then a hundred and twenty thousand, so an additional six thousand towards, um, our goal. Um, and with monies that are sitting in there, um, that are, um, going towards stellar, um, currently. It would be already in there funded, um, just as we continue to raise money, um, towards that goal, um, so.
So it's not coming out of any new fund, it's already sitting in the.
Right now, what we're, the way we're looking at it, and also what we're doing is, um. This, cause I've asked the specific questions just because of working through the stellar program. As long as if we get this grant and we are approved in twenty twenty-six. Can they follow us through the process of the stellar because it may take a year or two once our application it is. For the stellar and they said absolutely, so once you're approved, you're in their books for that sixty thousand and they work with you on your process to get to the construction goal. Um, so that's kind of why, um, we were excited about this. It's fast court, we just, we've split two, uh, conference calls, um. With the gentleman and, um, he said that, uh, our, what we're working towards fits a perfect profile for what they use these grants for. Um, so I am this week supposed to be working on the application to get that application in by next week, uh, to be able to apply for this grant.
Do you have a layout, like dimensions and how wide, how long?
Um, so we did get the dimensions, um, early on, I don't have the exact dimensions right now, but we did get them to be put into the plan. Um, on there.
Yeah, concrete slab.
Yeah.
So it's about that. Does that both sections?
Probably.
Yes, yeah, on that side, it would be the concrete slab for that section. So we are looking at doing the both sides, not the, so if you look on the other picture, one shows a canopy over it. We weren't getting that involved with, um, that because it's an additional, um, cost in that. Um, but, um, they, the whole thing is, um, one of the sides of the, uh, is going to be a mural that we're wanting for. Um, community to represent the community and then the other side also, um, can be incorporated for some sponsors. So that is an additional way that we're gonna try to raise some money, um, for the stellar program as well.
Okay, do you have, uh, an idea of where you would want it to be placed because you only have so much room in the park and you have other?
Yes, so.
Want to do.
Um, and working with the consultant that we had early on, um, for the stellar program, we did work out some areas. Um, we went through different. Places, um, and the best place that we thought would be, uh, used the most would be near the existing playground. Um, to where parents possibly could use it while their kids are playing and still be in the vicinity to watch it. Cause there will be this and an inclusion playground added, that way it's all interconnected and can be.
I just wanna make sure that makes sense.
Yes.
But I hope it doesn't impede something else.
No, this, we kind of had this in place, um, when we were looking at it, uh, because we did go through different re- iterations. Whether we do one fitness center or we do multiple pods along the trails. Um, and the consultant says that their statistics show that more people use them when they're actually in a fixed. Location and closer to the trails where they can do their.
I'm a little concerned about. The, uh, workout equipment being left out in the.
It's non-mechanic. So there's no moving parts to it, you use your body weight. It's basically your body weight and gravity.
I couldn't tell.
Yeah, so there's no moving parts on these apparatuses, so.
And the flooring is what, uh?
It's a concrete with, um.
Astroturf or something?
Ki- kind of, um, like a rubbery type material.
Okay.
Astroturf, rubbery, um.
Track material, I think.
Yeah.
It's what the kids call hardcore.
So the, so the extra money that needed is coming out of funds you already have.
We already have.
For more money, just the permission to go for the grant. Okay.
Um, and then the actual, um. The grant money can also go towards doubling.
Right.
Um, of the funds.
Your money, yeah.
Yes.
Mr. President, we have.
Got any other questions? Go ahead and make a motion, Kathy.
I'd like to make a motion to allow Nicole Daly to apply for the, uh. Twenty twenty-six, uh, campaign funding, uh. What was it called?
Fitness grant.
Fitness grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Alright.
Motion carries.
Application signed before. Internal. I have one quick announcement and I was gonna hand these out to you guys, um, so I do have a flyer for the tree planting event. Um, that will be held, um, at the Lawrenceburg High School. This will be, um, from nine to noon on October thirty-first, which is Friday. Um, and planting, um, between twenty-five and thirty trees around the school and then the remainder. And there's gonna be a total of a hundred trees planted throughout the communities, um, but just having a, trying to get those planted. Make something fun out of it and volunteers, so I wanted to give you each a flyer, um, I've had it added to the website as well. Um. So, just as a brief announcement.
Can you send, email me that digitally?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all I had.
Thank you, Nicole. Alright, let's move on to, uh, new business, we have an upgrade right away of. Who's it, Dog?
Dog Ridge.
Dog Ridge, Danny? Danny Kraus, survey.
Evening, uh, Danny Kraus, getting Jay surveying the losing area. Um. Seavers Incorporated, uh, owns a couple of pieces of property back at the end of Dog Ridge Road. And they were approached by someone who was interested in buying one of those tracks. And, um. The road hasn't been maintained to that property. For quite a while.
It's been abandoned, right?
Abandoned, non-maintained, uh, hasn't been used for a while. So, uh, in the past, what we've done is surveyed. What evidence there is of the road. And then like a retracement survey of the right of way. And then approached the Board of Commissioners about getting a driveway permit. For, uh, someone to use the right of way for their driveway. Um. This is. The only access that I know of to this property.
That's what I was gonna ask, if it was landlocked or whatever, if that.
The sixty acre itself doesn't touch another public road, um. Seavers just do own other property out there. But, uh. This is probably the way that the property was historically accessed, but I couldn't tell you when the last time was that. There was a house or any buildings.
Well, question on. Where the road goes through, what properties does the road touch where it's going through?
Road. Goes through, uh, Highlands' property and Denzler's property and Seavers' property. Cause where the, where. What I would have considered the end of maintenance of Dog Ridge Road growing up would have been at the last house that was back there.
I don't remember who lived there.
Uh, uh, Jim Husband lived there, uh. But then in, uh. Ninety-nine. Um, Denzler's bought the property. Beyond that and they got the Board of Commissioners to approve. Them using that section of right of way for their driveway to access their property. And from where their driveway cuts down into their property. Um. Dog Ridge Road took a sharp ninety, more or less. And then it ran on the property line between Denzler's and Highlands. Until it got down into Seavers' property and then it followed. Highlands' property line until. To the southeast corner and then it cut down. Through. The sixty acre tract into another tract that the Seavers' own. And then it went to a road that doesn't exist anymore and probably hasn't existed since the turn of the century. Um, but then in nineteen oh-three, the road was moved. Um. There were two strips of land bought from the property owners at that time. And that's where I remembered Dog Ridge Road, but you can still see the depression. Of Dog Ridge Road where it went down into Seavers' property.
What, what's their intention with the property?
I can't say for sure what the new owners, if, if it's sold, will do with it, um. They haven't expressed any interest in anything other than hunting or putting up a hunting cabin, but. I mean. Once. Once they have access to the road, they, they could potentially build a residence back there. Um, they would be really limited. As far as being able to develop or divide the property because, uh. Our current county ordinance states that you have to have a frontage on a publicly maintained road to divide lots. So unless they, unless someone would upgrade that road to where the county could accept it. Or upgrade it to where they would be eligible for a private road type subdivision. They, they wouldn't be able to divide it. I mean, I, I guess the potential to go to the B Z A and create another lot would exist, um.
But once they, if, if this is turned over. Once it would be turned over, then it is their opportunity to be able to do that, correct?
To be able to divide it?
To be able to upgrade it, if, if say this goes through as is and they build the first road in. Five years from now, they decide, man, I could divide this up into ten lots, they.
It, it wouldn't be publicly maintained, no, we're asking for.
But I mean, if they, but if they, once it's turned over, could they then upgrade it? To county road and then go to B Z A and divide it? Cause then the road is a road again, correct?
Well, all they're asking to do is to build a driveway in the county road right of way, they're not asking to upgrade it to a county road standard.
I get that, but if they, once they get permission to do that, then there's nothing to say they can't.
It, it's still not a public, well.
Cause we're taking ownership away from who owns. Theoretically, when the road goes through, two peoples, it came off two people's property. So you're taking that other person's property, giving it to one person to control it. That's my only question is.
Working under the assumption that it was the county right of way back to the Seavers' property and through the Seavers' property because. The eighteen sixty, eighteen seventy-five and eighteen ninety-nine Atlas is all short road there. And the county must have thought they had. Some sort of right of way there when they moved the road in nineteen oh-three and there's nothing. In the commissioner's minutes that anything was ever vacated. Um.
Excuse me, Dick, I'd like to ask the attorney a question about that real quick.
Mm-hmm.
So. If, in the case, if in the. Likely event or likely event, whatever, any event. That, uh, this gentleman would improve the roadway to. A super nice road. Would we, as a county, have to now maintain that?
No, we don't have to accept me, so that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean it. County wouldn't take over maintenance of it unless it was built to a certain standard and I'm not sure that.
And we would have to agree to take over maintenance.
You would have to accept it, I mean, yes, I mean, Todd would have to inspect it and.
We have recorded the information in our standards.
Actually.
Is it a stance that you wouldn't have to take? Even if it was built to perfect standards, could it still not be accepted as a road?
Yeah, yeah, you don't, we're, we're, we're not required to accept it, um. I mean, there's been situations where subdivisions have been brought up to standard and we have, but that was a choice the commissioners made, it was, it wasn't required.
Sorry, I interrupted you, Danny.
No, you're fine, I mean, I don't know.
Nothing in, in game. Hard to accept a road. For people that don't know, that's Todd Listerman, our county engineer. So, but what happened is. If somebody would approach and say, I want to build a county.
Yeah, Todd, could you come up here, sorry, thank you.
Our procedure is if somebody requ- requests.
Todd, wait till you get up there, bud.
Todd List from county engineer. Our procedure in these situations where there's a, a right of way, that somebody or a private lane, okay? That's on dedicated right, and first of all, it had to be a dedicated right of way, would have to be our standard width. And they would have to build the road to our road standards before we even consider it. But what happens in those situations is prior to somebody bringing the road up to standards. They would approach the county commissioners and say. You know, would you be willing to accept the road if I did all these improvements? And then you have the option of saying no, yes or no at that time, they don't wanna invest that money doing something that. You know, this won't get accepted at the other end. So what would normally happen is they would, whoever the owners, would have to first come to the county commissioners and ask. That. A road can be built and you don't have, the only thing you can issue is a driveway, you don't have to. That a road can be built and you don't have, the only thing you can issue is a driveway. You don't have to. You know, give a permission for a road to be built on your right of way, okay? So it's kind of up to the county commissioners now. Three county commissioners today. You know, but that your county commissioners ten years from now or counting commissioners twenty years from now, who what their opinions are.
Are you trying to tell us we're not gonna be here?
What I'm saying is that's a decision that the county commissioners at that time will would make. But in an official like just like you do, you know, with a subdivision street, I have to, I inspected and make a recommendation. And you you accept or not accept based on our recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Todd, thank you for clearing it up.
Essentially, the whole right of way that I show on that survey would have to be upgraded to that standard, not just. The new section that's not currently being used for anything. So you would have to look on to the end of maintenance at the second last.
So would there be any improvements at all in the road?
What's that?
Would there be any any improvements at all to? The uh a road that's been abandoned? I mean, would they put gravel down or anything or just you just want access?
There would be, there would have to be some improvements because the way it is now, I don't think you could get back there throughout the winter time. I mean.
Probably trees growing in part of it, isn't it?
I don't think so.
You can get a, well, I drove my truck down most of it. Um but my truck's not pretty, so I'm not worried about scratching it. Um you can take a four wheeler down it pretty easy right now.
So what's the county's position on this? I mean, are they? Saying it's still part of the county, it's just been abandoned or? Or, you know.
As to whether it's abandoned.
Not used, whatever.
I don't, I mean, it's hasn't been used for a number of years.
Well, I guess, but what would be the the county status on it? I guess is trying, what I'm trying to get to.
All right, Todd, what's your opinion?
If you gotta come back up if you're gonna talk.
Might as well sit over there, Todd.
Hey Todd, Todd, two minutes.
Basically, the county's position has always been. If the evidence shows that there was an existing road there into a landlocked piece of property. Zimmer Road is a perfect example. Very end for reeleys. Okay, build a two and a half, almost a, was it almost, it's over a half a mile, not a mile long. Uh basically, it was a landlocked piece of property. At one time, there was a road that went. The best evidence by the surveyors where there was the old road at one time that accessed and went through that property. So they did the same thing, did a survey and that. Was real, you know, the road you could hardly see, but there was trees in it. There probably were, you know. Ten fifteen inch diameter trees. They had to be cut. To get back to the property, but the best evidence of the old road based on. The maps and and what was there on the road bed showed. An old road back to that property. And I think and they did a retracement of where that old road was. And what they're trying to do is declare. A official access to that property that's landlocked.
So what's the status? It's the county still considers that a.
I mean, I don't know, we can consider it's the best evidence for the surveyors. I don't. You know, we maintain, I I deal in what we maintain. You know what I'm saying? That's that's where my, I maintain.
About that part. I'm just talking about this particular road.
But that would go back to the surveyors to say, what's the best evidence on a old right of way? And that's the atlases and in the in the road bed that's out there physical. I haven't gone out physically to look at it, no. So as the engineer, I I default to the surveyors because that's what they do.
Dennis did provide maps back from eighteen seventy five and. Nineteen thirty six that show the roads is that's what these are here if you guys want. That the road was existing back then.
Okay, I think we all conclude that the road existed. It's just not being used.
I mean, I don't know when that road was used last. Um I think the thirty seven aerial may show a. Barn back there. I don't know that there was much more than that there then. I never found anything in the commissioner records that vacated the right of way, so.
So it's still a county.
I'm assuming it's still there.
If the county wanted to open it, the county could go open it back up. That's what.
There's a similar procedure for the county to do that. I think that's what we determined the apparent right of way procedure.
Right of way procedure when you're looking to open if we decide an old county right of way. I I guess I. Was getting to is if it if it wanted to be opened, the county could go open it.
Right.
So the legal right is still there for the county to do something.
Yeah.
Yes. Through the same process.
It's a similar process, yeah.
If we never closed it, why would we have to open it?
Right, cause it ain't the main.
I mean, I'll.
Because because you would go through the apparent right of way process to get it actually described. Uh apparent right of way process allows allows for a twenty foot. Well, forty foot wide right of way is what it allows. So so what we have right now are the old atlases and the aerials and things like that that shows the road there. But if the county were going to open it again, the county would have to go through this and then you go through this apparent right of way process. So that you would have an actual described right of way through it.
If we did open it, then uh who would be responsible for maintaining it?
If we opened it?
Yeah, we would. That's what I'm saying. That's okay. Tim should be happy to know. You have any more questions?
Um probably will, but I know there was a few people that this is what they want to talk about. I have. Interjection on it.
Do we have to uh? Just.
I mean, I I know that um there are people that here that would like to speak on this and so that would be up to you. I don't think you need to. This isn't a situation where you'd need to open a formal public.
They can just come up. Thanks, Dennis. Okay, I know there's several people that uh would like to come up. This gentleman raised his hand first. Okay, you please uh tell us who you are and.
Sure.
Where you live. I make you a jab.
Try to keep it brief. I'm Gregory Highland. Uh we are at seventy six eighty seven Highland Road. I'm the sixth generation Highland. This is the fifth generation Highland. Uh thank you very much for allowing public comments at this meeting and I also appreciate the work Dennis um that you have done on this. Uh my great great grandfather, uh John Joseph Highland signed an easement on this property. Uh in nineteen oh three or nineteen oh four, so what Danny was saying around the turn of the century. Hundred and twenty two years ago, um for what our family lore called the road to New Elsis. Um which many of my ancestors um were living then, uh that was a pretty important road. Um where I think we maybe have a difference of opinion is where that road went. Uh so the nineteen thirty seven, and I know you've got access to this if you want it, but the nineteen thirty seven. Uh aerial photo shows that that road. Uh and it's it's the best one that I can see that aligns with what Grandpa Victor told me. Went right through our property and so it didn't go along the property. It went into the property and down in there. And the materials that kind of say that, uh what I can see is it aligns with those stories um. Probably is more of a gravel road at the time, you know, roads generous word. Um it probably was abandoned when a bridge went out in that time. To be clear, that nineteen uh oh three easement never touched what's the present day Seavers property. Um that that went in through there and went into what's now Wally and Jackie Kraus's property and on into New Elsis. It would have cut through our property. It. I understand that there's no record of having vacated, but there's no reason that this road would have existed. Why would he, why would, why would John Joseph Highland have signed an easement in nineteen oh three? To say, yeah, sure, take this road through my property if there was another road that already existed twenty years before. It just, it doesn't make any logical sense to me. Um so the the pro forma survey is uh very helpful and interesting um from my pers- perspective and there's also a red line photograph which maybe you've got there. Um it doesn't really, it's not really supported by any historical day evidence that. You know, the road was there from a legal historical documentation perspective. So it would essentially require the county to say, yeah, this property that's right now used for tree growing and hunting. And people running their four wheelers back there um. You know, was not part of the easement from a hundred and twenty two years ago, but was from way back even before that to accommodate this. And essentially you would have to basically confiscate and say this is, this is still our property. Through whatever means from my perspective that you would need to do that. Um I certainly understand and appreciate Mister Seavers wants access to his fifty eight acre lot. Um I do question and I think Danny started to answer that question, but why? Why not simply access the property from North Dearborn Road through their existing properties? Um it, the reality is in Dearborn County, there's a lot of flag lots. There's a lot of panhandle properties. That's how, that's been the custom. Uh since back till forever um for how we have handled family divisions or unnecessary sales that have happened on those properties. So um we we do oppose this plan that goes down through. Um pass the existing right of way that John Joseph signed in nineteen oh three. We have the documentation back from Kramer back to nineteen oh three. Um and we thank you very much for for all the work that everybody has done, has done on this.
So essentially you're saying the right of way is going through your property. It's not going down.
Through the property, not down along the line to the next property along, which is Mister Seaver's property.
And and the uh easements that were signed in nineteen oh three. I'm particularly interested in the overfly in nineteen forty seven, but that's something else.
Yeah. Yeah, but during the depression that they were able to take this picture.
So. The right of way stipulates, I'm I'm assuming we're signed off on with you, thought that it was gonna follow. Property lines and not go into your property. Is that kind of what you're indicating that?
No, he's got it and it went through.
It did, it did go, it went right through the middle of our property. That's.
But but that was the right of way that it was signed.
In nineteen thirty or four four. And that that aligns with the family lore of the road to New Elsis, which went right through the property and then did not go down along the.
So you you your your issue is that it it did go through your property. You don't want it to go through your property, even though there was a right of way.
Okay, with with whatever John Joseph signed in nineteen oh three, I'm good with it. It does not go on to, it does not continue on to the next property and lot. It's just an unfortunate reality of it for. Mister Seaver, from my perspective.
You have some questions?
Probably more, but yeah, not right now.
Thank you, please. Appreciate it.
I'm Gregory Father. Um Greg Highland, um. We own eighteen acres and have since eighteen ninety one when John Joseph Highland bought the property. Um the. Road is very clear on that photograph of what easement we gave up in the early nineteen hundreds, very clear. That doesn't come anywhere near the easement he's showing on the pro forma survey. Okay, that uh he wants to extend and open up this right of way. Uh that, you know, if you think just logically, and I think there's a reason to do that. Why would Dearborn County Commissioners buy an easement from John Joseph if there was already existing roads that went down? Uh to North Dearborn.
Or we'd have to ask your predecessors.
Well, I I I mean, you you, but I think deductive logic and reasoning would say, why would the county commissioners buy this right of way? If there was already an existing road over here, there would be no need to do that.
You can't always use logic when you're.
Sorry, um what happens is the fact of the matter is Mister Seavers owns two hundred and thirty one acres. South of us, our property is two hundred and thirty one acres. He could accommodate access to his top fifty eight acres, which he wants to sell, okay? By creating a panhandle lot, which I think Nicole could tell you is very common practice in Dearborn County. You really don't have to to renew a road that's been out of service in sometime in the eighteen hundreds, okay? All you have to do is just divide your fifty eight acres and provide a panhandle on the two hundred and thirty one. You don't have to uh open up this abandoned road that hasn't been there. The family story is there was a storm that washed out the bridge and that's why the road was abandoned. You have to think, well, why did it abandon the road? Well, there was a storm washed out the bridge and nobody had to come down it because they couldn't get across the east fork of the Tanner's Creek. And so, you know, ours isn't the only, I heard the word landlocked. Well, there's two hundred and thirty one acres there. Create a panhandle lot if you want to sell the fifty eight acres. You don't have to go and open up a easement that we don't even think existed. And and again, I understand what your point is. My point is is. In nineteen oh three, John Joseph Highland. Signed a paperwork to create the easement that went down across our property over across what now Kraus has, okay? And uh went across and it connected up to Jacob's Road. You don't have to open up the several hundred feet that hasn't existed, we know for a fact. Since John Joseph signed that in nineteen.
What's the damage that you would incur if that were opened up?
Well, I would say that zone architectural, okay, we consider that to be a tree farm. There's gonna be considerable, there is no right of way now. Now, um Denzler's here is gonna lose sixteen and a half feet. We're gonna lose sixteen and a half feet, so we got a thirty foot easement that comes through there. Now, when you think about it, okay, they're confiscating our property, okay?
But you're talking about an easement and then you're talking about losing property.
Well, that that easement doesn't exist. It's on paper. But it the only thing is, is they've walked back there and said, well, we kind of think maybe this is where it was.
Isn't that the reason we're doing the survey to find out exactly where everything is at?
Well, if you look at the survey, the pro forma survey there, uh I can point to the thing where they more or less did that by dead reckoning. Okay, it was like there's a point where the reason, the nineteen oh three easement cuts across, which is marked on that. Pro forma survey and it's pretty clear to there.
But don't we have to go by the signed documents?
What I'm saying is there's no documentation that that existed. He can't find any documents. It's like, well, we kind of think this road went through here. This is what it ought to be. And I've been hired by Mister Seavers to provide him access. He certainly has a vested interest in serving his client. To say a road used to go through there. I would question that wisdom that the river went through there. Again, I'm trying to say, why would that road go through? That road was abandoned, replaced in nineteen hundred years ago, hundred twenty two years ago. And now we want to go back to a couple of. Atlases and you wonder that we, here's, see this little line down here? That's a road. That's the same atlas that lists Dover as Kelso. If you look in the edge, you say, how does the accuracy of this? Well, that says Kelso, and there was Kelso's Dover. And then we want to look at that and use that for for reference and it's not a a legal document. But we can go get the legal document from nineteen oh three and say that it is right there. That 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 reference is readily available, hundred twenty two years old.
Okay.
And you say, well, this don't open up. What's the alternative? It's kind of two hundred and thirty one acres. Do panhandle lot? There are a number of people here, I am told, that there's over. Thousand acres. You're talking about a thousand acres of people that say, we don't need that this end of the community. It doesn't take much imagination to say, gee, if they connect this road ultimately years down the road. To North Dearborn, now we got a shortcut to East Central High School right up Dog Ridge. See, man, isn't that gonna create a mess? And I think what happens is, is the prevailing thinking is, we don't need to get this started. You know, Mister Seavers wants to sell the property, fine, create a panhandle. Uh situation and leave that alone. It's been left alone for a hundred twenty two years.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dennis, I'm gonna ask you to respond to some of this stuff when everybody's done talking, if you would, okay? Anyone else? Come on up. I'd say three minutes to you too, but I will probably shoot that out the door.
I'm talking to two people that did.
Okay.
What is your name, sir?
Uh Mark Hall. Mister Highland said, how many generations have lived in that area? We live in a beautiful part of the world, right in in Dog Ridge. There's probably close to two thousand acres, fifteen hundred, two thousand acres of wilderness with maybe two homes within that area. And it's something we all treasure. There were seven landowners came tonight, a couple couldn't come. That have over a thousand acres right there adjoining the property, the Seaver's uh Seavers property. And we're, you say, what will we lose? We're gonna lose the rural character that we have in our community there. If we start allowing the road to go through, that's probably something that is a big concern for everyone here. That's why.
Andy, if we approved anything to allow, of course, that road to be reopened, would anything, would that reopen the whole thing?
All that's before the commissioners is to allow the old road right of way to be used as a driveway.
A driveway.
That's what they're asking.
Okay, they're not asking to open the whole thing up and take away, you know, what you're talking about.
And you know how you eat an elephant, just one bite at a time, and we've seen this before in the county. Where one thing occurs and then another thing, and then another thing, and it's a gradual process. So we're looking, and, and let me, let me back up to where you know that all of us are here because we do not want this. But one thing that Mister Holland was saying is, if really you look at these maps. And I've been there for seventy-two, seventy-one years, and you go down to Dog Ridge is very, very poor road down at, towards the end there. And then when you go to the last house and go down the road to Denzler's. Then if you continue, the old road, when I was a kid, I would ride motorcycles, would go past their house a little bit and turn to the right. And go down to New Elses, where the winery is. What the surveyor is claiming by pictures mainly, is that the road actually went forward from that ninety-degree turn. And went forward to Severs' property to the south. And if you go by a picture, I mean, how we don't know that's a farmer's uh, path to get to his barn, or you know, a logging trail, or. A picture does not tell you that, and I don't think there's really a description of that easement going to Severs' property. So that's what's in question right now, that leg from the ninety-degree turn going down through the Highland property that he mentioned. That it actually goes straight south and goes to the Severs' property.
Okay, but your concern seems to be like, if, if we approve this, that the entire road would be open, and then that would lead to.
Development, houses.
So on and so forth, but if we're not, if we're just talking about a driveway, we're not talking about opening the whole thing back up.
Well, first of all, if they don't have, if there's not an easement from that corner to the Severs' property.
Well, I think that's in question.
That's where we need question, and the one thing that uh, Mister Holland didn't mention is that. We feel that we didn't have very much time to discuss this issue and look into it more. And we would request that you could put this off the decision until another meeting. Because we want to uh, acquire an attorney that we can discuss this with, and that he can look at all the paperwork. And, and get an opinion from him, and he could present it at the next meeting.
We'll take that under consideration.
So we'd appreciate it, you know, with short notice that we could have more time to learn more about this through our, through a, a land attorney.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, again, we have two farms down there, and we're against this. For multiple reasons, but also because we feel that there's really not a, a uh, easement there, but also. I, the second person I'm gonna play tonight is RJ Beck gave me this letter, I'm a resident of Kelso Township. I'm writing to express my concern and opposition of the proposed reopening of, upgrade of the right of way. At the determination of, or termination of Dog Ridge Road, I've been blessed to reside with my family. Uh, here since two thousand eight, my wife and I choose to live on a family farm here that our grandfather, great-grandfather started in nineteen forty-seven. I want to be clearly started to the change of existing road survey that terminates at Dog Ridge Road. Um, I'll submit this to you and won't read the whole letter, um, but. Uh, again, we have about a thousand acres and seven landowners that, that want to have more time. To talk to an attorney and possibly another surveyor, and to determine if, if this is. If this is legal or not, if there is actually a right of way.
Do you have an issue with that?
Postponing it.
Postpone, temporary.
No, I, I think it's.
Okay, all right.
Can we do it month?
I'm sorry?
A month would be the second, uh, two meetings, would you have twice?
We have two meetings a month, first Tuesday of the month, and then two weeks later, every other.
November eighteenth is your second, November meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so we could have, we could have a month?
Yes, it'll be there next evening meeting.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate that. Submit this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else care to speak?
I'm Marty and this is my sister Rachel. Property adjoining, you know, Highlands and where they said that the right of way that uh. Highland was talking about, I'm, I'm in full agreeance with him, where it takes a ninety to go down the road. The other parts in question, you know, uh, what that goes through Highlands, that's, you know, where. Biggest part of the problem is they have with it, and of course, above all, you know. We, we really don't want to see a road, a driveway, or whatever. You know, go back there because like, uh, Mark was reflecting and Highland before. You know, in the future, one thing can lead to another. That, that's my biggest, you know, worry about it. Um, and I'm in agreeance with what he said, whatever happened with the idea, it would. There's no idea of a panhandle, you know, that I've heard of, I mean, that could be brought before Severs to solve the problem. Possibly, you know, so he could access it that way through panhandle of their property, and then it wouldn't be, you know, hassled to. Island or whatever, I mean, that would make more sense to me rather than just, I just feel like it's kind of bullying your way using the county. To open up an old abandoned road.
Well, that's, that's the process, it's not bullying, it's the process.
Well, that's just the way I put it, I guess.
Yeah, I really appreciate everyone here, you know, we'd love the opportunity to obtain legal counsel. Um, unfortunately, my father is ill, and my mom has to care for him, so they're unable.
Otherwise, he'd be here and a couple other people like Jamie Houston owns a big chunk of property of this.
I think you guys have, that have spoke have done very well for the people who weren't here.
Yeah, so, yeah, we appreciate that. Rachel, uh, Boland, Rachel Kraus-Boland, we appreciate Danny doing his job. Um, and we know what it's like, we have some landlocked properties too. Um, so any, uh, my father's, and my goal was to maintain the land, um, more of as a preserve, and. Uh, I love that you can go back there and you don't actually have cell access. It's a manly place.
Back sixty acres of property we had back there, we just wanted to get literally like a fifteen-foot section of property from. Island, and you know, we respected that, he does not want to sell it, you know, to us, so we could have easier access to ours, you know, um.
Okay.
But.
Thank you so much.
I don't think anybody wants to sell property back there, they, everybody wants to keep everything. Right, anyone else, okay, skate the cameras rolling.
Wait, wait.
Denzler, Denzler.
Denzler.
We're property owners at Water Highlands, and I just want to speak on behalf of my husband and me that we don't want it opened up. You know, you get a lot of people driving back. So this, whoever's buying it and making the driveway, you know, you can't say it's a private drive because it's county road, and then all of a sudden you have people coming back. And we get people all the time knocking on our door, asking if they can hunt on our property and stuff, so. Opening it up would just make a mess, and we would lose a lot of trees. Cause we have Osage orange trees and, you know, groves of trees that are. Growing along the road, so I just want to say, we oppose it, and we hope that the Severs can figure out a way. However, they get to this property now, that they continue using the right of way from their other property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis, would you like to respond to any of that?
Any questions?
Yes, sir, step up. Could you move that microphone over just a little bit, so we can pick you up a little bit?
Sure, my name is Dan Severs.
Oh, there we go.
The property owner, um, in question. To do a flag lot is virtually impossible, we have to go over the creek with the bridge. And we have to build a road approximately, oh, I don't know, what, what it would be, a mile, two miles? Yeah, um, you know, there, I know there's a sixty-foot cliff there, there's a creek running through it, so we had to forward that creek. Possibly two creeks to do it.
How deep are these creeks?
Um, it's the main.
Are they all, are they always, uh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, how, how deep?
How deep is the water?
I mean, what, can you afford it, or?
It's, it's the same creek that the bridge washed out in the county would not reopen the road.
Yeah, where we still have.
Exactly, yeah. Um, so, logistically. It would, if I was going to do that, I would look at developing all the property we have there, because so much expense. We'd be putting that road, we just suddenly want to put a little driveway back there.
How far from the, how long would this driveway be?
Um, the driveway that, that we wish.
What are we driveway in question? In question, yeah.
Um.
If the road was to be built from North Dearborn Road just to the south end of that sixty-acre tract. It is right at a half a mile.
No, the road, the right of way.
What's your proposal?
Oh, how far is that?
How long is that?
Yeah.
Oh, um.
But while, but while it's looking at the gentleman that we are, uh, that wished to purchase from us. Have been longtime county residents, um, they want. A place that matches all the surrounding homeowners places. A place that's out in the wilderness that they can go to, they can enjoy nature, um, as far as I know.
About building a place?
As far as I know, they're not intending on building a house, you know, they could at some point in time. But right now, they just simply want to use it for recreation. You know, and if it's an easement that we have, that does not make it a county road. Anymore than the approach coming up to that easement would be a county road. Which, you know, there could be a, um. Gate put across there, whatever, so.
Okay.
But as I said, we're not looking to develop at all.
And I guess that would be my question, Mister Severs, is are you going to sub, do you want to sell this off and build a subdivision back there, or do you?
That's not what you said.
No, we, we normally don't sell property, this was personal friends of myself for years. They want something, a place for their children and their grandchildren. To go back for recreation, to hunt, to ride four-wheelers, to do whatever.
Okay, thank you. Dennis, you have anything?
Just to get from where. Denver's driveway.
Dennis, you gotta come up, I was there, sorry.
To get from where Denzler's driveway enters into their property to the Severs' north property line, it's about eleven hundred and fifty feet. Um, from Denzler's driveway down to Highland's south line, it's seventeen hundred and fifty feet. Um. I don't know that. Anyone would have to build that. A driveway all the way to the south end of Highlands, but that is what I got shown on that survey. Um. As far as how I determined where this old road was. There's an old road bed there, I mean, you can physically walk out in the woods and see it, I mean, it's not like I just scaled it off of this old plat book page. I don't even think I could scale that good enough to figure out where it's at. But. I am. More than happy to, uh. Come back to the next meeting to discuss it more.
Okay.
Did we find, I mean, since there was a easement sign?
There was an easement signed in nineteen oh three, the commissioner's minutes.
But is it, is there a description with that easement, or is it just?
Oh, that description is very clear, I can plot that one, other than the part of it that goes through, uh, Wally and Jackie Kraus's property is missing a course, meaning it. There's information that's not there, but it goes. From where the piece that's described through Highland's property, it goes from that point all the way down to the creek, but when you. Plot it, it doesn't make it there, there's a course missing, and there's just not enough records to try to put that back. Um. In nineteen oh three, the township trustee was directed to. Repair the road, um, I've got copies of the commissioner's minutes, but I don't, I didn't bring them with me, um. They moved the road for some reason, it's not real clear why, it's just. Members of the township came in and asked the commissioners fixed the road. Um. I don't know how else this property would have been accessed, I mean, it was a separate property. In nineteen thirty-six, I think. Um, because it was owned by two different Severs', the property from. North Dearborn Road up to the south line of this was owned by Harry Severs. And this piece of property was owned by John and Catherine Severs. I mean, we just don't have the records that are. Necessary to reestablish a lot of this stuff.
So we don't have the records to actually delineate where this thing should be. So you're giving it up to the commissioners to make the decision as to how this whole thing should play out, we don't.
Well, I delineated where I thought the old road was on that plot, um, as to whether. Well, I mean, people can disagree, I mean.
Well, that's why, it's something factual that we could look at.
Several of these old road surveys, and I did this one in the same manner I've done the other ones in, um.
Okay. All right, at the end of the day, we, we would like to have a win and a win, if we can come up with that. Yep. I get that you guys don't want further development, but sometimes you don't know, maybe they just want to use it for recreation, and nothing else would happen. That's possible, I mean, we always go, well, I've sat in these meetings long enough to know that whenever something like this happens, everybody says. I don't want this because I moved out here for the peace and quiet, and I get that, I love this place, I was born and raised here. But sometimes we have to look at. Maybe what they're trying to achieve is what they want, they want a place where they can come out and enjoy the, what you guys have. So, um. Just saying.
Two things.
I'm not leaning one way or the other, by the way, I'm just making an observation.
Well, two things, if, I agree we should wait to give him time, but also, Andy, if, if it is, and this is just throwing out, if it is. Approved to let it in, could stipulations be on the approval? Yeah, that's what I was thinking, the request is only for a driveway, for, for a resident, residence or recreation.
Access to the property.
Access to the property, I mean, yeah, I mean, it could be, um. If the determination is that, yes, this is old county right of way, and so it belongs to us, and so we can say who can. Use it, I think it would be well within the commissioner's right to say, look, we'll allow you to put in a driveway that's only for one. One resident, or one. Use, one, whatever, yeah, whatever the wording would be for one person.
That way we're trying to protect everybody here, and yet be able to provide over there, that's what I'm looking for is a win-win.
Right now, I'd like to make a motion that we pay the list till the. November eighteenth, November eighteenth meeting.
Second.
On favor.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thanks, everybody, for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Let me get some visuals next go around, Danny, it's good for that he has sent me nine pieces of information that I've copied. That's when you see these white binders around here, it'd be nice to be able to look at these screens at that time.
Can you provide electronic stuff for, I'm assuming you have all this?
To put it on the screens. Figure something out.
Yeah.
You just.
Give us our best shot. Ask Nicole to come with you to the next meeting.
Nicole, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we'll do that, we'll try to do that, okay. All right.
And on the same rate, if you have, if you got, if you prepare something next time, make sure, and you want to. Do something with it, make sure you get it ahead of time.
Yeah, same, yeah, if you guys.
Okay.
Your email, or.
If you have some sort of presentation of it, you know, great that you can get it to her in some sort of orderly format.
Okay, Ms. Hayden, do you have anything for us?
I do, um, I am presenting for Ryan Johnson, who is the director of the Hart House.
Right.
Um, it's this certification of local government approval for shelter projects. Um, it's this certification of local government approval for shelter projects. Basically acknowledging that there's a homeless shelter in Dearborn County and the board commissioners are okay with. This being here. Um, they do this every year. And the Harthouse, um, has to submit the budget to the state and before they can get the funding from the state. This certificate has to be, um, signed off by the president of our board of commissioners.
You got the document for me to sign? We need a motion to approve this emergency solutions grant.
Um, I will also move to approve the, uh, emergency solutions grant.
On favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. You want this back?
Sure. Right there.
Okay, are you doing, uh, I'm assuming claims?
I need, um, is the minutes first?
No, no, I got.
Alright.
Claims, payroll and minutes.
Okay, so. These are claims. Yeah, I have three sets of claims.
Right, motion for claims.
Um, move to proof of claims.
Second.
All thing.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Dwayne did first.
Yeah.
Payroll?
Yep.
Move to through payroll.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Motion carries. Minutes.
For the October seventh meeting.
Okay, motion to approve the, uh, October seventh, twenty twenty-five commissioners meeting.
Second.
On favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. Mr. Biden, just, do you have anything for us?
Nothing this evening.
Commissioner comments, Dwayne, you have anything?
Just one thing, um, I've had a few people bring to me, uh. We moved our meeting a little bit later, which makes it more convenient for when people want to come down. I've had a few people comment to me about other board meetings being at times when they can't attend, because of work or whatever. Is there any way that we as commissioners can decide when the times of meetings will be?
I don't think we have jurisdiction over the boards.
Yeah, they said, they said there are many times. Yeah, I, I believe that's correct.
Yeah, yeah. Their set, like redevelopment sets their meeting plan, commission sets of being busy, sets it. I didn't know for the, because they were, since they were appointed, if there was any, uh, authority that.
Okay, Kevin, do you have any, uh, comments?
Um, attended the OKI meeting on October ninth, uh, was a very instructional meeting, uh. Hopefully we can start, uh, working on getting some, uh. Some funding from them to do different projects. They'd had a, uh, paving project that looked very interesting. And, uh, a lot of good information came out of that.
Thank you, Kevin. I don't have anything. Uh, is there any late, late arrival information? Is there any public comment?
Yes.
All right, come on up.
Michael Mycel, Goose Run Road, Dearborn County. Um, I addressed this board thirty-four days ago about the condition of Goose Run Road. During the meeting, I explained in detail the condition and the needs for the roadway. I read the meeting notes from September sixteenth and I was kind of disappointed in the lack of information in those meeting notes. I think the quote is that I conveyed some concerns about the road. Well. At that meeting, I asked several questions. Is there a plan to repair and resurface the roadway? If there's no plan, how do we get one going? Who makes the decision on what roadways get repaired? Going back to all the surrounding roads around us were resurfaced and ours was excluded. And what is the process if it's documented to make that decision, what roads get took care of? And where can I find the past road expenditures for Dearborn County? Now, today I tried to go on a website that had all the, all of the expenditures and it, and this is like the third time it tells me it's. With a four oh four message. In other words, a broken link, I guess, is what that means. So I'm unable to get that. So at that meeting, really no answers were given actually to the address the questions asked. But the commissioner stated that they would look into it and get back with me. As of the start of this meeting, this evening, no contact has.
I think what we said was that we would have our county engineer at the next meeting for you to ask questions.
Well, I've got.
I also state that these meetings are recorded. So anytime you need something like that too, would you have access?
Yeah, there, if you go to our webpage.
I've been to the recording and I've read the, uh, I've read the, uh, the transcript. I also have the notes from here. It says that you will get back with me and I have the notes from the.
That's what we said. We said, we, we couldn't answer the questions.
Right, okay, well, forty-four days later, I'm back to ask the questions again because I've got no response. Nothing in writing, nothing on the phone, nothing in the mail, you know, nothing in my email, so I'm back to ask it. And I'm going to continue if I could please. Since the board meeting, I've been going through Dearborn County's databases and I've discovered that Goose Run Road has been an issue with the county. For twenty-one years. Uh, Dearborn County Planning Commission meeting notes dated September twenty eighth, two thousand and four Gulfview acre subdivision. It was a topic of access, that the road was not in condition to accept the additional traffic of that subdivision. Dearborn County Planning Commission meeting notes dated April twenty ninth, twenty fourteen, ten years later. Soap Hill Wilderness, uh, Meadows subdivision, same thing, several comments about the condition of that road. Since both these meetings, there has been building in both those places. The golf course has been converted into. Since my time living, it has been turned into private residence, so we have increased traffic. So with that said, where do we go from here? I mean, I'm not getting any response. I started out at the superintendent of highways back in March, no response. I started you guys have emails. I didn't get an answer there. Come to the meeting, I didn't get any answers.
Response.
Excuse me?
I've sent you a response.
But they didn't answer my questions.
I came to your house.
I get that, but. Talked about the questions. I don't have an answer to them.
Okay, I think to the answer of it, it has been looked at and I think there has been some estimating done. But it's now it's a matter of trying to acquire funding to be able to do anything.
So there's a plan? I have, I can get access to that plan and see it?
They'll know if it's a for sure plan because they got to try to find the funding to fix the slip. There's a slip area in the.
Slip area alone, the slip area alone is one point five million dollars. Just to fix the slip, not to do any paving at all, just to fix the slip, one point five. And I have, uh, uh, we have instructed. Highway superintendent to approach council to ask for money to fix that slip. That's a start if we can do that.
Is that documented somewhere? I need accountability. I hear, I've asked.
They're going to be on their agenda. We don't know if they're going to approve it or not. It's up to them. They have, they control all the funding. And we, we have to do the work with whatever they give us and we have to prioritize where we're going to.
I understand that. I understand the approval process of things, whether the money becomes available or not. But I'm looking for the commitment that something will be done. We're talking twenty-one years.
To do it.
We're, it's just twenty-one years, you've not had the money to work on that road?
Todd, Todd, what's your cycle on roads?
Todd Listerin County Engineer. Uh, looked at the last time that Goose Run was paved was nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, last count was done in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, basically, we tried to do a count middle of the road. Last count in two thousand and nineteen was forty-two vehicles in the middle of the road. Middle section of the road. Uh, basically, we are funded strictly by license plate fees and gas taxes. Your property taxes don't go to roads. Just so you know that. Uh, with our funding and what we get from council this year. I got one point three, one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We are going to, we are going to try, and the applications were just completed earlier this week. To secure up to a million dollars from N dot. The old community crossings was a million five. They cut the grant back to a maximum of a million for a million five. I was told, don't expect to get a million. Because there's going to be a lot more people coming into the money and the pot's a lot less than it has been in the past. So if I use a rosy prediction of getting a million dollars. Plus the one point, one million, three hundred and fifty thousand. That means our cycle length for roads is sixty-three years. So I can pave roads once every sixty-three years. If you were paved in nineteen ninety-nine, sixty-three years from nineteen ninety-nine would put you at. Twenty sixty-two.
When did you pay Proctor last time? When did you pay Park? When did you pay?
And what, what we look at is traffic volume and connector roads. I have yet to pave in the twenty years, a subdivision, a low, low volume through road or a dead end road. The problem is they never get because the funding doesn't exist. I wish the funding did. Now, if I do a worst case scenario, I'm on a hundred and eleven year cycle. Means I can pave a road if I don't get the grant. That's puts me in a hundred and eleven year cycle. Is that realistic? No. But I also have sixteen bridges that need to be replaced at a cost of about twenty-two million dollars. I have contract designs for small structures, ten of them. They'll average out at fif- five hundred thousand dollars apiece. That's another five million dollars. That's all got to come from funding somewhere. So I'm just.
What makes me the decision of what road gets paved?
Well, me and the highway supervisor.
Basically.
So me and the highway supervisor look at each road in the county. We look at the condition.
That's why this.
It's a, it's conditions. We look at volume. We look at condition. Of the road and is it, is, is it a true connector? Not a through road, a connector. Now, I know you live on Goose Run and you didn't get paved.
Which is considered a local.
Okay.
Just like Park and just like.
But Park, but Park and Cross is connector. What gets used at three fifties now?
It's classified as a local, it's a county matter.
Because that's the way we do it through the system, the federal highway system and we. Our higher roads that are collect, consider collectors or tierals by N dot. But we feel that need to be a higher rating through planning is only rated higher. And that allows for us to try to seek funds for those. And to try to get us a little more pushed through seeking funds through grants.
Hey, when was, when was Park paying last? We talked about this twenty-one year cycle and.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is.
Now, I, and just ask that question.
But, but, but we, we can't go back and forth, but to talk, not defending of that, but some roads get paved more than other roads.
And that's what will happen. Get to the other end.
Going through bright, roads in bright are going to get paved faster than some of the roads on the outline. I've got roads that are near my house that really need paved too. They're really bad too. People are emailing me. We need our road paved. There's no money to them.
Been an issue for twenty.
We, we understand that.
In public meetings for twenty-one years.
There are other roads.
Documentation.
There's other roads that are having just as big a problems.
Is there a process for the evaluation and is it documented? Yes or no?
It would, there is not a complete plan for every road in the county to say, we're going to resurface this road. In a list order, if that's what you're looking for. It doesn't exist.
Which need to be paid or which ones need to be repaired?
We, we do, to, to get our grant funding, we hire a consultant. That inspects our roads physically every two years. Based on that is condition rating. So then we look at condition rating. We look at the road itself and we look at volume.
See those reports?
There is no reports.
You said you, you didn't get a report from your consultant?
The, the, the payment asset management plan, but it's going to show, it's going to show, uh, spending. All the roads within five years. That's the way this, that's the way the state does it. Am I going to be able to pave every road every five years? No. But that's how the report comes out.
By spending county funds on roads. And I'm asking you to show me the report that you had a consultant compile for you.
That's all that report does is evaluate the condition of the roads. And you're more welcome to see, if you have your email, I will email you the last report. And we can do that. And I can, I can email you that report. And now I'll show you the condition rating of all the roads in the county as of that last inspection.
I ask another question. What's the process of, of getting this onto an item where I'm not coming in myself and having a conversation with you yet? Where it actually becomes a visible item that the public can see, public, the other twenty property owners on, on Goose Run. I had some with me last week. I didn't bring them this week because.
There is, there is no, if you're looking. There's no law.
We have grants. How do you get things approved if you don't have a plan? You don't have a proposal?
We have, we have a payment asset management plan that shows conditions. And then we go ahead through that showing the condition of the roads. Then we go ahead and apply for the grant accordingly based on condition. And what we're looking to do to that road to improve it.
That's one of them.
So if it's rates a two or a three, it says, well, how much asphalt you can put on it? If it's a seven, it's a chip seal road. If I can do chip seal. Okay, that's, that's what the, that's what the plan says. So when I ask for my grants, they look at and say, okay. What do you, your estimate is to do four inches of asphalt or three inches of asphalt? Yes, by your rating number, you have a three, that's three inches of asphalt. Okay, you're, you're good. I'm not asking to put three inches of asphalt on a road that shows seven that doesn't need three inches of asphalt. That's what they're looking at.
In the beginning, it said it was one point five million dollars to repair that road.
Slip, just the slips.
Just.
That's why.
That's the estimate for the slip.
God, how, how many unexpected slips did we have this year show up?
Well, what happened this year.
No, wait, man, wait, not just like.
Well, I mean, that's, welcome to Dearborn County.
But I mean, how many this year?
I mean, I may not say bad.
Officials should say to, to the taxpayers, welcome to Dearborn County, pick on the road conditions.
They're full of slips. We're doing the best we can to maintain what we got based on the funding that we have. Now, the best thing if for the citizens to do. And what we need to do is, is, is it goes back to funding. There's, without dollars, you can't fix things that need to be fixed.
Well, that my tax rate, the last three years, the county, the county alone is getting twenty-five percent. Have increased my taxes, twenty-five percent. And tell you what, I guarantee it's going to go up a whole bunch of mixture because of property evaluations. You're getting more money.
You have to understand.
Where's all the other money going? Where's the county that you guys are getting more and more property taxes?
But it's, the, the, the state controls how much the county gets of that property tax. It's not all of it coming back to the counties. Believe me, when I joined, when I took this job, I had the same assumptions you do. It's a whole different world when you.
About twenty-five percent for each property owner reporting to your assessment form, I guess, for your, your auditor.
But that doesn't go to roads. That goes to everything else that has.
By general fund or not paid for by your property taxes. Now, your property taxes do give you a small percentage, three cents per hundred, three and a third cents per hundred. Okay, for the bridges. That brings in a little over nine hundred thousand dollars a year. Now, you live probably in Aurora Towns or Aurora Library District.
No, I live in Center Township, at a Center Township there.
Okay, but you are in the Aurora, if you look at your thing, are you Aurora, uh, Library District? And I don't have my, I don't have my. But probably is for Goose Run, it's close enough to Aurora. You're in Lawrence Library District, not, uh, Lawrenceburg Library District. Okay, the tax rate for Lo- or Aurora Tax Library is fifteen cents per hundred. So you actually pay almost five times more for your libraries than you do to fund bridges. That's just a fact of life. I can't change that.
Indicate which.
Okay, but I'm just, if you look at it, there's a sheet that they have that shows your township and what. Okay, but I'm just, if you look at it, there's a sheet that they have that shows your township and what, what library taxes, how much you're paying. If you're in Law, Lawrenceburg Town, if you're in Aurora's Library District, you pay fifteen cents per hundred. The bridges are three point three per hundred. That's a disparity. I can't change that. That's the way we're capped. The max they can do is ten. Is that enough to get me through to do, replace the sixteen bridges and the other ten small structures? No.
I get that. I get the budgeting thing. I got a limited amount of money. You can only do so much. Let's go back to my questions. My questions. A lot of consultants evaluate the roads.
Right.
When do they use to evaluate roads? What criteria do they use?
They use what they call Pacer system. It's a state approved national system. They drive every road. They look at the correct, the distress cracking throughout the, the roads. And based on the distress cracking, patching, there's a, there's a rating of a ten brand new road. A brand new road, two years, you know, two years later, you really haven't seen much cracking on it, still probably a nine. You start seeing some traverse cracking sped out every sixty, seventy feet, maybe a seven. Does, does you start getting, the more cracking you get, the more block cracking you get, the more patching you get.
And that's why.
Then what happens is it drags down. It's from the ten, is a worse condition road. And based on the condition, okay, in that rating, there, it corresponds to a corrective measure to be done. Whether that's a three inch asphalt overlay, a chip seal, a four inch asphalt overlay. Or if it gets to a point to a one, then it says you need to completely mill the road up and completely reconstruct the road and start back over.
Well, then, I want, I want a copy of that program. And for the, uh, Indiana.
And that'll be explained in that report that I'll give you.
That's why, for the Indiana Open Door Law, I can request that from you. You must provide it to me. I want the reports for the last twenty-one years or whatever the cycle is. And that's twenty-one years. I want the reports for Goose Run. I want the reports for, uh, Soap Hill. I want the reports for North Hogan and I want for Crossroads. I want all that information.
It'll be.
So I also want.
Sir.
Just hang on.
To, to put a public records request, you can't just ask him. It has to be done.
Read it right from your.
It has to be done in writing and it has to be submitted to the auditor.
Right.
It says, I can ask for it. Or read it. It says off of your website. Uh, public records requests may be made to the specific department, because she is, he's the engineering department. Are through the county auditor through the request form. I'm reading it right off your website.
So I've always been told that they go through Connie.
But it's through the request form. It's not just, you can't just declare. You gotta send it.
Says, then you, then you need to clarify that.
Okay, Mike.
Okay.
Well, what would be a better thing is if you would use the request form to write it down so he knows what to get.
And then there's no mistakes made.
Just, just for your, uh, kno- knowledge, the records don't go back twenty-one years. Okay?
You need to put that, they can tell me that.
Okay, I will give you what is available based on, I think the PAMP started in two thousand eighteen or, I think, two thousand eighteen.
Your best answer should start participating for funding.
If all those roads around us, you left that road untouched. I've been there for thirteen years and it's had a little.
Because it's a thirteen foot wide road that has forty-two vehicles a day that runs through the middle and is, is, is. Where crossroad is, has more traffic, Soap Hill has more traffic and Park Avenue has tra- more traffic.
Like, this is the point here. There's still people that own property and use that road. And, and, and when it floods, it's our only way out.
And I have lots of roads that are like that.
That doesn't mean anything to me. I'm a property owner in Goose Run and I'm.
And we, we, and we understand that.
I understand that.
It's irrelevant to this conversation.
But, but the, the problem is there's limited funds. We don't decide where the funds come from and go, go.
How is that decision?
Through council.
Council starts.
County council.
But who puts the, also to them, they see.
You can go to county council and tell them we need more money for roads. That'll.
I've got, I've got the, uh, the highway superintendent going to council to ask for one point five million to fix your.
Just to fix the slip. So we gotta see, we gotta get that for first. Nothing happens overnight. We can't call them and go, hey, we need this. It's gotta go to their next meeting, which is coming up.
And, but that goes.
We know that, then we'll know if we can.
But that same funding is whether do we fix the Goose Run slips? Okay, or do I fix the sixteen bridges or the ten small structures that I have listed being designed?
So you're not really asking for a goose runner. You're asking for a road repair, but the money will be.
Well, I mean, it would be specifically asked for at the council meeting for a section of road or a. Okay, now my general question at the end of the year, okay, when we asked for one point five million and they gave me one point one million. Okay, because they said, I can't, we can't give you one five. We'll give you one four or one one. Okay, and then I have two hundred and fifty they gave me to go for the match grant. That's how I come up with the one point three five, one point three five million. It's what they allocated for us to be able to use next year.
Saying, come up with a number if you don't have a proposal to fix Goose Run, a proposal to fix road X, to fix bridge Z, you know? You have to have a proposal. It is, you know, a bid or whatever you're gonna have the contractor do, you know?
I, I don't do that till I know what kind of funding they're gonna give me. Once the funding is decided, then we decide which roads can fit that are, have high needs, high volume. Connector roads and which ones we're gonna go pay for that year. And then I'm not gonna pave a road like North Hogan if I know it has other things that need to be done. So North Hogan didn't get paved when the upper end of North Hogan got paved or the lower end of North Hogan got paved. The middle section was left out. Why? I had two bridges and a slip repair I had to fix first.
They got paved. The upper and lower section did get paved.
I know, but the middle section did not till those sections got done.
They, they paved Park.
Because of the condition the park was in, the amount of vehicles that used park. And it's a fact that it is, they used as a detour when, uh, three fifty is closed.
No, the Goose Run was the detour. That's, that's what's where the road up so bad. And ever since that, the traffic has increased because people have found that way to come through there. You go one forty-eight, it's three and a half miles. You go down Goose Run, it's two miles.
Todd, are you going before council for one point five million?
That's Tim, no.
Oh, Tim is.
That's Tim.
So Tim Greby's going before council.
That's slip repair for Tim and the highway department.
Okay.
I deal with bridges.
Bridges and, yes.
I do with bridges and I, I do, I have a contract.
Take a look.
And I do the grant, and I do the grant applications for community crossings.
You said it was, you said it, it needed to be done, so, but.
Well, me and Tim, but again, it's gonna come back to. This is that, and council gonna make that agreement. Do they have one point five million to dedicate it? Or should that money be used on XYZ bridge or small structure, whatever? Because there's only a certain amount of funding and which one gets it. You know, I mean, I get asked a lot of times why, you know.
Mike, the plan is that the highway superintendent, Tim Greby, is gonna go in front of council to ask for one point five million dollars for slip repair on Goose Run Road. That is the plan at the moment. If the council approves it, then we move forward. Oh, yeah. Uh, got any clue on that one?
It's, uh.
November eighteenth?
November of.
November something.
Oh, our meeting.
Our meeting is, no, next, come at council meeting.
Council meeting.
November twenty.
Eighteenth.
Our meeting is November eighteenth. I don't think council.
Okay. Chris, I don't keep track. Is it something like council anymore?
You know, guys, it's funny, this meeting, I was up looking at some property on Soap Hill last week.
Oh, it's a thirteen.
Yes. They just came up.
They're not thirteen.
And one of the neighbors up there.
Uh, Mike, the, the meeting's on November thirteenth.
Five o'clock.
At five o'clock.
Um. I was up on Soap Hill the other day looking at some property that they just come for sale. And then there was one of the residents up there. And he was looking at that property to buy it. And we were talking about how nice the road was there on Soap Hill. He says, yeah, him and his wife went out of town, came back and they got a nice paved road. He goes, there wouldn't, I don't, he doesn't know why it was paved. He said, there wouldn't be potholes in it. He said, why did they pave the road? That's my same thing. If you're saying Goose Run is a serviceable road. No, let me finish speaking. If you're saying that road is fit for vehicle traffic right now. Then Soap Hill, Crossroads. And, um, and Park, based on years, twenty-one years, they had twenty-one years of life left in them. That's what I, I understand this evaluation. I really don't. I drive, I drive Park every morning. I drive it at four thirty in the morning and I drive it at, at three o'clock in the afternoon coming from work. We drive it, go into the grocery store back. That road was not in bad shape. Crossroads, the only thing wrong with Crossroads is where you guys cut a hole in it to put a culvert in and just put gravel and left it that way. Other than that, it was a good road. I, I just don't, I mean, that's where I'm as a property owner and a resident of that road having trouble figuring out how you guys make a decision of what roads get paved. When a road's falling in the creek and it's turning back into gravel and it swamps out. I mean, they come out and put a patch in it this week. They patched a water puddle. The water was still staying in it. They just threw a bunch of asphalt in it and bashed it down. Maybe a couple of truckloads of, of asphalt. That's what we get. That's what we've got for the twelve year, almost thirteen years I've lived there. And like you said, it hasn't been paved since nineteen ninety-nine. That's the matter of fact, that was evidently according to Steve Hall, a longtime resident of that area. So that's the time that road was paved for the first time. So that's the original road bed, but that we're still driving. I don't understand that you're gonna, that's why I'm asking for these documents so I could wrap around my mind and understand what's going on. Just don't understand it. We pay taxes. We maintain our properties. We expect something out of it, whether it's our gas tax, our tag tax, our property tax, it's our tax. And, and, and we expect a return.
You got Crossroad paved back to, to Goose Run. Soap Hill was paved back to Goose Run. Park was paved to Goose Run. There are roads that I know.
Well, we know. We come off that nice smooth road onto Hell Road. I mean, as soon as you come off a park, it's nothing but, it's nothing but big old patches and, and potholes.
And there're big old patches and potholes all over the state.
I don't care about dress county. I'm a resident. I'm, and I'm asking, I'm asking accountability for, for Goose Run Road. That's, that's just a, that's a deflection. While you keep telling me that, that's nothing but deflecting from the fact that I'm sitting here talking to you about, which is Goose Run Road.
Did you build your house on Goose Run?
I did not. I bought it. I bought it. I rebuilt it.
But the problem, there, there isn't an easy answer for your, for your, for your problem.
It's unacceptable that there's no answer.
Well, it, it is the answer. I mean, there's no money. That's the answer.
And you won't get any money until you put a proposal out there. I'm sure there's some grant and federal money. If somebody put the time in.
There is.
It went and wrote a grant and presented it.
That's all he does and they just cut our grants this year.
Maybe you need to get someone else because I mean, I, I've watched the, the government give money to other countries to do the stupidest crap in the world and we can't get a road fixed?
No, you can't.
So Mike, what, what, what's again, the plan right now is for, uh, Tim to go in front of council and ask for one point five million per slip.
And I also heard that money might get allocated to something else.
The council decides that that's not the prudent way to do it. Yeah.
That is the plan right now going forward.
Okay, so what, we fix the slip and then what, what are we gonna do?
Well, then, then I don't know. We'll go back, we'll go back and ask, ask the experts what the, the people that pave roads. I don't pave roads. He doesn't pave roads. He doesn't pave roads. You don't pave roads. I hope, uh, that's not your job. Cause I think you're retired, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm still working, but yes, I'm, I'm retired.
Yeah. So we go back then and say, okay, is it ready to be paved? Okay, let's go back to council and ask for some money for it being, to be paid or if we can find a grant or. God, you know, well, once again, to, to get other money is fortunately to have a wheel tax.
Probably gonna be back. Oh, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just gonna keep beating the drum.
Okay.
Well, yeah, you have to beat the drum. You have to beat the drum where it needs to be beat. And right now that's council.
Well, I don't know. I, I'm.
We can't, we can't send any money. We don't have any more money to spend.
Council has to allocate the.
We can't do this all night. We're gonna go back and.
Okay, I, well, I'm gonna say this one thing and then I'll step down.
All right.
All right, number four on the commissioner's responsibilities. Supervising construction maintenance of roads and bridges, including the power to establish a cumulative building and sinking fund to provide for the building and repair of bridges, to establish county highway highways and to authorize the preparation of maps of roads and install road signs. So on and so on. So other words, you guys have the, have the authority.
Yeah, there is a liability, but we don't have the money. In a different place, the council has to allocate.
If council doesn't allocate enough money to fix any roads, we can't fix any road.
I'm gonna go to a council meeting and they're gonna say it till somebody presents something to me. We can't really allocate.
They're gonna go present it. They do every year. They, and they get their budget. And then if stuff comes up like slips and other things, they go back and re-present.
Yeah.
And council decides yes or no, and that's what we can work off of.
Well.
I know you don't like the answer, but that is the answer. It's, it is what it is. That's, that's the way.
Never answered that question. Why twenty-one years? And it's been, and it's been the public records for twenty-one years and no action. I wrote my page. Sorry, I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty passionate about this.
I, and I get it.
And, you know, that, that road, the condition of that road affects our property value. We go to sell them and I'm a buyer coming down. You drove it.
Yeah, sucks.
And they like, you know, it's beating our cars to death.
Yeah.
Okay. White motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?